This is the Ed Roy Ball, Public Hearing Room, Arts Parks Health and Agent Committee and the Commission on Disability. I'm Councilman Tom Labange. The City Council is still in session, but in the interest of our meeting, our joint meeting, we want to move forward. I'd like to ask Sam Overton to say opening remarks on the Commission of Disability.
Thank you, Councilman. We welcome you, and this is, I believe, the second time we've done a meeting like this. This is largely to inform the council committee about the work that this committee is doing as well as the work of the Department on Disability. But we will have one general public comment period which will be at the beginning of the agenda, which is not shown on the agenda. We left it off by accident. And if you want to speak, please, again, fill out the speakers' cards and route them up here. And with that, since we're running a little behind, I think, Tom, we can-
Well, Sam, I just wanted to take ability to thank the Commission and ask that these commissioners introduce themselves again for the record for everyone that's here. You're welcome to meet David.
David Wolf, Second Vice President of the Commission on Disability.
Theresa May Dever.
Oh, Theresa, let's hit that mic on. Hit that mic a little better for-
A little further.
Good job.
There you go.
Say it again, Theresa.
Theresa May Dever.
And we had a wonderful Saturday afternoon out at Northeast Police Station, open house. Thanks for representing so well.
Go ahead, Louis.
Louis Herrera.
Good to see you, Louis, from the San Fernando Valley.
That's correct, sir.
Great job.
Luis, what the First Vice President?
Thank you, Luis.
Regina Houston-Swain, Department on Disability.
Good afternoon, Steven Simon, City AIDS Coordinator.
Sandy Driver-Gordon, Chairperson for Special Education.
Tony Abraham, Department on Disability Budget.
Great. So we have all of us- We have three absent commissioners today.
That's okay. We have some council members who may join us later on here. We're going to have some general public comment right now. And Peter Getzoff? Peter?
Can someone hand the mic to Peter, please? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming, Councilman. My comment is that the, from P3 where I park in handicap parking, the doors are not equipped for handicap, so you have to push the door yourself. And I just thought maybe they could do something about that. Thank you.
Okay, that's in City Hall East?
City Hall East, yes, sir.
Great. Ms. Schechter, your job is to follow up. Peter, if we have your phone number, we could do it. I'll send my deputy over. Thank you very much. Now, Mr. Clerk, let's go through the items. We did our public comment. Thanks for your help. Item number one, please.
So, thank you, council member, Steve Simon, again, City AIDS Coordinator. Tony Abraham and I are going to do, just want to give a brief framing of the hearing from the department's perspective, as well as open the first topic, the Americans with Disabilities Act. The Department on Disability's core mission, of course, is to ensure that all city programs and services are accessible to people with disabilities. This, of course, includes required accommodations for the general public as well as accommodations for city employees with disabilities. Now, currently, that entire function is handled by two staff, two ADA coordinators for the entire city. They work closely with two staff that comprise our computerized information center, the CIC, which provides basic referral and case management supports to the public. Due to referrals, both the ADA and CIC staff have had to reduce their community outreach and their compliance functions. However, they continue to work with both public and private entities to improve access wherever possible across the city. And they remain a core link in the network for ADA compliance and referral services throughout Southern California. I'd like to ask Tony to also join in on some of the, I'm sorry, there he is.
Let me mention on behalf of our Executive Director, Regina Houston-Swain, about the budget impacts we've had due to cuts. The department's mission is closely tied with the mayor's priority goals of employment, education, and public safety. We continue to seek grant funding and other resources to support our mission. Overall, we must stress and assess the filling of vacancies of the city's ADA compliance officer as soon as possible. Over the last five years, we've had a 23 percent reduction of personnel alone. We're at a very small department. We went from 21 people down to 16 with one vacancy. And we've had a 14 percent reduction in funding over the past five years in our total budget, including layoffs this year. Have greatly diminished our ability to have a significant community present and to provide a consistent level of technical assistance to city departments. One of our concerns, of course, has been a public relations specialist position that we're missing, and therefore, we're not able to do the level of outreach when it comes to ADA and educating the public about the ADA programs. And finally, we continue to work closely with the city attorney's office to prevent and address lawsuits relative to the city's compliance with the ADA. And that's it for my comment.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, has anyone had a comment on that? I want to say first off, though, and Mr. Overton, maybe you could add to it, I think it was extremely special day when we were right here on the Western Courtyard as we celebrated the 20th anniversary. And the most important moment I remember is the all-event participation of Rafe Johnson, who stayed the whole time, didn't do what us politicians do, run in and run out, stayed the whole time to share his experience and commitment, which is very special. He recently was honored as the San Fernando Valley Volunteer of the Year and the Fernando Award, so I think we should jointly honor him at some time in the future. But I think it's important, and when you have your 20th anniversary, maybe there's some other things that we could do to remind people the importance to continue the effort to always remind people the effort of that. Mr. Overton.
Thank you. Well, first, Rafe Johnson has a special place in the heart of LA and has for many years, and we'll certainly try to work out something where we can acknowledge his support for people with disabilities. Do we have any comments on item one from the commissioners or questions? Okay.
So we're going to note and file that, now we're going to, item number, Tom, Mr. Clerk.
None.
Oh, yeah. Wait a minute, there was. Daniel?
Hold on a second. Item number two- Hold on a second, Mr. Clerk, we're still back on one. Daniel?
Number one.
Would you like to speak on item one?
I just want to-
Item one.
Want two, two and three. Okay. Sorry.
Two and three, not one.
Okay. So I'm, okay. So which one am I speaking now? Number one or number, I mean, number two or number three?
Okay. We'll call on item number one.
Number one.
So we'll call on number two. Thank you very much. Two and three.
Have anything to do with number one?
Thank you.
Number two? Number two is, is that-
All right, well, hold on just a second, there's a little action. Item one is, but first, we're going to note and file that. All approved? Say aye. Aye. All right, now, item two, public comment.
Item number two.
But before I give the comment, Mr. Clerk, what would you want to order?
Item number two is a discussion on emergency preparedness as it relates to the needs of persons living with disabilities, including the status of next generation 911 and emergency notification.
All right. Do I have-
Hold on a second, Daniel, let me call on your member. Mr. Overton?
Okay. Well, I don't know what Daniel's comment's going to be, so.
Right. He's going to comment on item number two.
Right.
So I got to call for public comment now, and then I'll ask you a comment after that.
It's fine.
Daniel, go ahead, please.
During the last, during the last, last three years, I have come to the Commission and asked them to pre-elaborate a volunteer system database where people can volunteer online the information of what they could go, what the condition of people with disabilities, and what, and where, and where they are at. In that, in that way, in that way, we can, we get, we get, we get, we get a better way of keeping track of people with disabilities. There's no difference. There's no difference in them giving, they're giving, they're giving the database from Asha Services, the heart, the heart, the heart community of people with disabilities, and they're having, they're having one area of people, of people with disabilities on database. That's what, that's my, that's my comment to you.
Thank you, Daniel. Mr. Richard Ray, Richard? Richard, if you could come to the podium, please. Thank you, Daniel. It would be helpful if we could get a translation from Daniel who spoke on his issue.
I have the interpreter here. We're all set, we're good. I'm going to go ahead and sign and show a voice for me, okay?
Very good.
I believe the council member is asking a little more clarification, actually, on Daniel's comment, so-
Which you were signing to Richard.
If we can either get that off the captioning, because, because, actually, if I can, if I can-
If I got to ask you, Mr. Simon, come here, will you please?
Daniel?
Come over to the chair.
For clarity?
Right now, just give it to the chair, there is to do that. Come here, Steven.
You want to come up there?
Yeah, I want to ask you a question, so come over to the chair. Richard? Richard? All right. We're going to ask Mr. Simon, I was asking you, because I like you, Richard. I like you a lot. You're a great city employee. But Mr. Simon can answer the question, so I'm going to ask you to relax and sit down. You're off the hook. Okay.
And Daniel, we just wanted to make sure at the hearing we had clarity that you said you've been coming to the Commission to talk about where people can go online in particular. Was that for disability services? And you also said about, commented about a better way of keeping track of people with disabilities and services.
Yes.
Are you asking for that to be available to the general public, or you're-
Yeah. Actually, actually, any county has, has a way to keep track, but you, but you might want, you might want, you might want to actually have a software device in the city, in the city, in the LA city, where you can keep track of, of where, of where, of where they're going to be, and, and, and you can easily, easily keep track if you want to by combining, by combining the effort of the, of the services.
This is, okay.
So if I could direct department staff to work with Daniel, and Daniel, you're very special, okay?
Thank you.
I think, I think Richard's a little more special because I know a lot more.
Yeah, sure.
But here's the thing, we want to make sure we hear and you testify before our council, so it's important that your passion, your concepts, your ideas, your needs get heard. So, Mr. Simon, I'm going to charge you to help us get what he would like us to know so we can hopefully help.
And that will segue with what Richard will discuss later around 911 and other-
Very good.
-computer services.
All right. Thank you very much. Now-
Thank you.
We're going to call item two officially, which we have. Commissioners, this is very important, and running from council meeting, I didn't get to do all my preparation, so I want to hear the comments, but I don't see a representative of the fire department or police department here. So with that in mind, if we could get our comments down, and on this particular item, I would like to just say, this particular item, I'd like to continue it and get the fire department here at a point in the, in the future. That being said, I open it up for staff and commissioners.
I just want to point out, council member, that this committee's, or has been involved with the public safety aspects of disability for quite a few years now. We've had a close working relationship with the fire department in helping to develop their training on how to deal with different kinds of disabilities in an emergency situation. And they've been very cooperative. They've appeared here many times, and that ended, unfortunately, when the city was sued two years ago for the lack of preparation for, for handling disabled people in emergencies.
Got it.
And accordingly, the city personnel generally, I think, have been advised by the city attorney to not talk about it publicly.
I haven't been advised by the city attorney, so I believe in the Constitution of the United States and free speech, so I'm going to ask for it unless someone tells me I shouldn't ask. Here's my question, let me just ask you, Mr. President. In the fire service in each neighborhood, the fire company for that specific neighborhood knows that at 2162, this is a fictitious number, Riverside Drive, that's a commercial pudding plant, and they know what chemicals are in that commercial boiling. Do they know your address, if it comes up on their computer, that someone there may need special help?
No, we don't have a system for that or a registry for that.
Should we have that?
There's debate on that. It has been done in some smaller communities. The biggest hurdle has been keeping the list current.
Is that Daniel?
That's the first big hurdle.
Right.
And then, people aren't always at home or at their workplace.
But let's just say if there's alarm came out at 4444 Maple, apartment 208, and you live at 4444 Maple, you know-
If we could overcome the aging problem of the information and keep it current, I think it could be a very useful tool to both the police and the fire department.
Tom, our staff has some information on that. Could I call up Angela Kaufman to give more information, please?
Sure. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council member and commissioners. Angela Kaufman, Department on Disability, one of the ADA compliance coordinators. Daniel's question, I think, was the same issue about having a registry. The city of Los Angeles, being as large as it is, we have actually looked at that issue for many years and have determined that because we don't know where people with disabilities are going to be in the event of an incident, the upkeep and the management of a system that would be voluntary and not required by people with disabilities to register would be cost prohibitive as well as not really being able to know, we'd be sending out responders to a location where the individual might not be. So we've got loads of commissioners here with disabilities, we've got some of the public with disabilities. If something happened in the community and you had that come up on the screen to say, we need to send the fire department, we need five vehicles to transport or evacuate people with disabilities, they might not be there. The fire department is very, very well-trained in the evacuation of individuals, not just people with disabilities, but those who are injured. They have told us without any question that they will respond, they will evacuate everybody in the way that they are trained to do-
And the disability community feels confident that's a, a fair system?
I-
And I ask everybody to join in on that, I mean, not just city staff, but Theresa.
Actually, you can volunteer your, your, your information to, to your, to your local fire, 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 fire-
Fire department.
-department, and, and they will know, they will know your, your, your pre, your, your pre-existing con-
Conditions.
Conditions, as is, as is the case with, with Station 42 and also Station 55 in my area.
In your neighborhood, very well. Staff, have anything more to add?
I just, I just wanted to add, as a commissioner working in the South Bay, there ought to be some type of system, I hear all the negatives of why not, but I, I do believe that there should be a system and some type of system in place for identifying. In these times, economic terms, a lot of us are not moving. We're staying status quo in our residences because of the cost of moving and the cost of doing. A lot of us are status quo. A lot of us know that there are, you know, where the fire department is. We don't have a relationship with the fire department. I do want the fire department, the police, all these people trained, but there should be an effective program that enables each one of us as people with disabilities to come up front and do something about it. I know we have discussed this in the past, but I think that somehow or another, we should develop an effective education program for us. I don't see it. I have tried whenever I see a evac, training, give me a crisis-
Crisis response training?
Yes. I've tried to volunteer, but I always get the hesitancy of having me there because it's a, I don't know, I just, I cause more, not more problem, but more work, you know, for them. But my whole deal about volunteering is that I want them to get the experience of working with somebody that has, in a wheelchair, that has braces, you know, that sort of thing. In the beginning in 1995, I took emergency, I was one of the first people to be trained in emergency preparedness in, in Virginia, along with Asha and all these other people. What I'd like to do is take the input in, I'd like to check with the fire police department. We have a regular committee meeting, all agendize it. And only I would say, there was discussion early on on when chemicals became part of identification, because firefighters would go to an industrial building and they'd have colors on there, they'd have it in their computer. All I would ask is say, is it possible at 3333 Merbey that they, if it came out of that address, potential person with challenges, and it up to the, and figure the process, all of this identification to a heighten there as they respond? They're not going to send anybody more. The first responder is going to make that assumption, who additionally needs to come. But on the first response, possibly, if it would be work, and when we look at one area of the city, Theresa, you mentioned Station 42 and Station 55, maybe we look at Battalion Two in the fire service and see what it means in the northeast area and see if it goes citywide. We'll be with the fire department and we'll continue this discussion. Commissioner, yes. David.
Councilman Labange, I would like to work with Commissioner Mata and other members of this commission on bringing forth certain recommendations based on this discussion that we can present to your committee.
Very good. We'll work on that. Luis, you had something you wanted to say?
Yes.
All right.
From personal experience, having dealt with emergencies, my wife's personally cited, and in the past, we've had situations related to emergency help for her. The first couple of times it was a real difficult situation, trying to explain various degrees of brightness to the paramedics to the first responders. But I can tell you, having seen my nephew just graduate from the paramedic academy, that they are doing a little forward in learning to know how to deal with persons with disabilities. It was great to hear that it is something that is being implemented into the training curriculum to make them aware that we are out there and we are going to be part of their rescue operation at one time or another. So it is good to see that progress is being made. It may be slow, but it is coming.
I see no one else would like to speak, Mr. Simon. I'm going to work with you on this, this way.
I believe on the broader topic of emergency preparedness and the sort of reverse 911, Angela and Richard just had a couple of brief things to add.
Very good.
Just so that everybody does understand, that emergency preparedness is not just our first responders or what we consider traditional first responders. Our department actually liaisons with all of the city departments that would be responding to any type of incident, including street services, wrecking parks. So it's not just the initial response, it's the aftermath of the response to ensure that people with disabilities are provided assistance, assistance and services in the aftermath. So it doesn't just stop at that initial acknowledgement that there's somebody there and that there's somebody needs assistance. I am going to switch over to Richard because part of the, the next generation 911 and the technology that is now being looked at to be implemented nationwide is part of this kind of registry or identification. The issues with it, one of the biggest drawbacks we have is that people with disabilities are not required to disclose that they have a disability, and when we start talking about violence prevention and vulnerability, every time somebody registers for something, it could add to a vulnerability. So we do have to look at those issues very carefully as to who would have access to databases, et cetera. If it's through the 911 system, then we do know it's going with fire and police. So I'm going to let Richard expand on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Angela. Richard Ray, I'm one of the other ADA coordinators, or other ADA compliance coordinators for the Department on Disability, but I wanted to add to what Angela was saying about the next generation 911 services, to let you know that the Department of Justice has published an advance notice proposal that was made for accessibility of the next generation 911 services. And what that means for us is that we need to look to upgrade their technological system to allow 911 to receive direct access to people with disabilities, so that people with disabilities can call in, for example, different types of services. Also, Federal Communications Commission has introduced a Senate Bill 4, I'm sorry, 3304 in regards to the 21st century and video accessibility technologies as of 2010. And one specific area of this communication via emergency services. And the emergence of new technologies, people are using now wireless communications, cellphones, pagers, and the like, has reduced the number of landlines that people have. And so the technology that is in use now, the problem is that that technology doesn't have access to the 911 services. Wireless devices, they, people can't have access, they can't, to the phone through the wireless services, but the 911 services is accessed through video wireless services and now on the various, which is a third party, it's not direct communication. And that requires actually five minutes to access directly the 911 services through the administrative line, not through the direct 911 line. And so the people who are using third-party services are not able to access the 911 services. Now, the Department of Justice and the National Emergency Members Association, BNA, is working to solve some of these issues, to implement access to the 911 services and transition to the reverse 911 system. Thirdly, right now, we are working very closely with the Los Angeles Police Department, informational technology systems, and other city departments to identify resources and funding to implement these type of services. And we need funding to provide direct access to those people who need to access, directly access the 911 services. Thank you.
Okay. Under that recommendation, we're going to do a little background research, and we'll have this in my committee at some future date. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
I demand that Theresa discuss your on employment and education for persons living with disabilities, including city employment and economic recovery programs, and partnerships, schools, and the Los Angeles Unified School District.
Staff, want to make-
Staff, want to make a comment, please?
Just briefly, councilmember, the city has certainly played a historic road, a historic role in working to identify employment opportunities for people with disabilities, as well as ensuring that employment is accessible under the ADA, Rehabilitation Act, and other federal and state laws. To that end, on the education side, Commissioner Driver-Gordon and possibly Andrew Kaufman had an opening overview of the education piece, otherwise we can certainly go to public.
Well, I think we should hear from the commissioners. Commissioner, who would you like to have speak first?
All right. First of all, let me just kind of give you an overview of what we've done as far as special education is concerned. In 2008, we had a public hearing, in which the place was packed mostly with parents, with their concern of what's going on in the public schools. Since that time, that the commission, we formed recommendations, in which we sent to the mayor, the city council, and the Board of Education. I'm happy to say that several of our recommendations have been implemented, a couple of them we're still working on. Angela and I continue to work and have ongoing meetings with LA Unified School District, as well as the mayor's partnership program, and asking them to help us on some new recommendations. I guess I would also, at this time, like to ask members of the city council if we could get some support with some of these items that we continue to work on, that we're not getting through with the public schools, that we feel, if we could have a joint effort, that some of these issues that we haven't been able to implement, could be implemented.
If your commission could forward those to me, we will certainly look at them, have discussions, agendize them, and do whatever we should do to try to help your voice be louder. A question I wanted to ask, in your background here, in the previous times, there was sometimes, I think in Los Angeles, there was Whitney High School, which is the high school?
Disabled.
Disabled students.
Right.
But now, there was an immersion program in the last 20 years or so, that tries to have everyone, at every place, how has that worked out in your estimation?
I think you're referring to mainstreaming.
Mainstreaming.
Right. Are you asking my personal opinion?
Sure.
I think it's been very difficult, the mainstreaming issue, mostly having to do with, our children need that special attention. If you mainstream them, they get lost, as you'd say, in the crowd, in the classroom. It's very hard on the teachers, because the teachers end up having to focus on the special needs child, and not the whole classroom. You know, I think socially, they felt that it was going to be very helpful. I think the problem there, certainly with the families that I work with, is the kids get more isolated. When they're in a special ed classroom, they have other young children that they can play with. In mainstream, they go out on the playground, and they're kind of forgotten, or the other children don't mix with them. So I think we have a long ways to go, as far as mainstreaming is concerned. I don't think we've been real successful with it.
Any other comments? David.
I think I would like to touch on that last point of Commissioner Driver-Gordon, because when kids get older in high school, I find that other adolescents will leave them behind. They'll be taken care of in the classroom by their assistants, but once they leave the classroom, they will not be integrated. They'll leave them, they'll leave children, they'll leave special education children alone. This is what I've been finding, and what I've been talking with students about, and they want to be integrated, and they want to go to the prom, and they want to do everything that normal teenagers do.
But I think it's something we should discuss, and not be afraid to touch it. And maybe, is anyone from LA Unified here? And maybe you have this, again, this is the great thing about our meeting, we could see items that we could get information on, and bring them back to my committee, and do that. I believe it'd be important. I went to John Marshall High School, Hamilton, and John Marshall were the metropolitan high schools that had children who had sight challenges. Louise, I know, what, you went to San Fernando?
Yes.
And that had a special?
Went to Monroe.
Monroe was the Monroe, Monroe area school that was out in the valley that had the need there. So you want to add something to that, Louise?
Well, I can say that from my experience, I was, I went to Monroe High School, and I was the only blind person there. Birmingham High School, on the other hand, was the place where they were equipped to handle visually impaired people with various degrees of disabilities. And their inclusion into the general population, and making the students part of it, does, did prove to be successful for some blind people. Other people couldn't adapt to it. Part of it is that the, in my opinion, my estimation, and as I've got more and learned to really assess the situation, it seems like, for the most part, it's a case of faculty being trained on how to deal, how to encourage some of these disabled people to not be afraid to be part of society. And at the same time, giving, you know, allowing the others, their kids, to see that, because we have a disability, that's why we can have a better group. And so it's a case of training and mainstreaming that has to be handled in a way that does not create the, what I call territorial rights.
Louise, very good. Doctor?
Excuse me?
Very good, Louise, thank you. Doctor?
I just want to add, you know, by law, if a parent asks to have their child mainstreamed, they must be mainstreamed.
I'm going to say, this is an announcement. Tess, keep going. Okay. See who we're talking about? They knew what item two. Hell, you're trying to fool us, aren't you? Okay. Well, okay, this is a test for the alarm system.
All right, I just wanted to say, by law, if a parent requests that their child be in a mainstream situation, they have to comply with that. The concerns that I feel with LA Unified School District has been, is they are trying to force the mainstream to save the dollars. So, because it takes a lot more teachers in a special ed classroom than it's in a regular classroom.
All right, so we're going to discuss it. Mr. Overton?
Yeah, if I could just make a couple of brief comments. First of all, Sandy is our expert on this, Commissioner Driver-Gordon. And a few years ago, we had a public hearing focused specifically on special education, and we came up with a series of recommendations, which we can share with the committee. And those have been guiding Sandy's work in working with the LAUSD. Some of them have been implemented in a fashion, and others are still not implemented. But we have a record that we can share. Before I move on, this item was also to kind of focus on employment, and that's not something this committee has been able to delve into much. But let me just point out that the last comprehensive survey of employment of people with disabilities was done by Lewis Harrison Associates, and was published about two years ago. It followed one about 10 years earlier, by the same organization. And their finding originally was that of all demographic groups, people with disabilities were the least employed. And unfortunately, their conclusion 10 years later was that disabled people are still least employed of all demographic groups. And of course, that was just before the recession.
Thank you very much on that. I'm going to add, oh yes, comment, please?
Councilman, according to statistics from the federal government, 80% of people with disabilities are unemployed, and only 20% employment.
Thank you very much.
According to the latest statistics we have.
Thank you very much. Comment?
I was going to say that I came through the ranks of Mayor Tom Bradley, and we had a tremendous and very effective employment program with the city. And where we worked with over 300 people during the year, with the different departments. I'd like to, sometime in the future, revisit the employment issues with, in hiring people with disabilities with the city. I'd also like to encourage us to look at, maybe have a dialogue with people that are, organizations in our community that are working with employment issues and people with disabilities.
Thank you very much. That completes our discussion, but Daniel, a public comment, comment, please?
I think it's very important for everybody to start emphasizing about the use of assistive technology in school and employment. I, assistive technology is just not, maybe, maybe, is not just for school, but also for work. These AT devices can be incorporated, not just in school, not just in work, by public libraries. Public libraries are the main factors of all, of all events that life involves. If you don't incorporate AT in public libraries, then, then, then the, then the community, then the community fails on the community. You can make, you can make, you can make, you can make a lot, a lot more empathy in public libraries. Now, in school, in school, they are supposed to have an IEP. And the IEP, before, it should be considered, considered, they, they consider assistive technology. They must consider, they must consider AT, assistive technology. And by that path, by that path, is the law. I want, I want to see, I want to see more teachers using AT. I want to see more libraries using AT. I want to, I want to, I want to, I want to see more parks using AT. Accommodation is the law. And that is my final comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, yes, councilmember. No, I just wanted to highlight Daniel, for the councilmember. So again, the highlight on the use of assistive technology in both schools and employment. If, for example, public libraries don't have assistive technology, then he's arguing that the city essentially is failing the community, and we need to ensure that that's available. Daniel also points out that schools are required to have the individualized, is it educational IEP? Plan. Individualized educational plans, that's the IEP, which is required under the law. And we'd like to see more teachers using assistive technology, and more parks using assistive technology. Things we can certainly look at, under the purview of your.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. Thank you, Daniel. On this particular one, we're going to send this to my committee for full consideration in the future. We'll coordinate time, we'll have a pre-meeting with LA Unified, and also we'll look at it. This morning, as I was passing a boulevard, I saw they're doing sidewalk work at a curbstone for ramps. And I said, statistically, this is the public works room that we're in, do we know where the people are that need us the most? And I don't know if we do. I don't know if public works does. So this is something else that we could look at, to try to put the resources where the people are. If there's a high concentration of children of need in school age, do need, need to create a school in that region. Francis Blad Elementary is in my district, and it's a very wonderful elementary school for children who are sight impaired. Louis, you got something you want to say?
There's one comment regarding what Daniel said, with regards to accessible resources. We have a public library in Northridge, northwest Northridge area. They do have computers, however, they're locked down to the point that one time they needed to do some research, and couldn't do it because, here again, tools are available by their lockdown, or people don't know where the accessible, accessibility resources that are assigned to that library are kept. So there needs to be a little more organization.
Thank you. Anyone else want to comment? So we have that clerk, we have that moderator from all the commissioners. This item, then, we'll move forward to committee for future consideration. Thank you. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
I'd like to make a discussion on HIV and AIDS, including availability and accessibility of HIV testing, and the city's impact on policy changes at the local, state, and federal levels.
Over to remarks, Mr. Simon, then I'll call for public comment.
Sure, I'll be brief, and I know you've got some public comment cards on this. As I believe you know, councilmember, the AIDS Coordinator's Office is essentially our primary public health liaison addressing HIV and hepatitis C epidemics. Our staff has roles in the, in planning bodies on the federal, state, and local level. We've got about $1 million we put out on the street each year in prevention and testing, but keep in mind that that's compared to $80 million that the county is putting out. That said, I believe the city's been extremely successful in reaching very hard-to-reach populations. That includes seniors, who are one of our fastest-growing populations, HIV-positive, youth, homeless, addressing syringe exchange programs, and incarcerated individuals. Again, our goal with HIV testing is that public and private providers follow the CDC guidance that's been out for several years now, that all Americans 13 to 64 be screened for HIV.
Thank you very much, Mr. Simon. We have one public comment card from the Women's Alive Coalition. Ms. Payne?
I just thought you wasn't going to try that first name, huh?
I want to try it now, but I'd get in trouble from you.
Good afternoon. I just wanted to speak briefly.
That's your beautiful first name. Fajiza?
Fajiza.
Fajiza, hi.
Good job, that was good.
Thank you.
I just wanted to speak briefly on one of the impacts that the city can have at the local level. With Women Alive, we've done education intervention and prevention programs that we've done that allow people to be educated, kind of neutralize the stigma and the fear of being tested, and how much more empowered they'll be with the testing. And so, on the local level, being able to go out into the communities that are recently stigmatized, like churches, schools, and those types of places, we've been outreach into the community, and those programs have been very successful, as we've educated individuals on why it's imperative that they get tested as early as 13 years old. So for some reason, the community doesn't seem to make the correlation that if they're having sex by 13, they're also having at-risk sex, and therefore, it follows that they need to be tested. And then the general population are too busy, and so we're going to them, into the community, and then our senior citizen population, we would need to go to them. And so those are ways that accessibility and funding can be routed, so that they can be, have a bigger impact on the testing situation for all.
All right, Mr. Simon, you work with this organization?
Yes, sir, actually, the city has worked with Women Alive for many years, probably at least 10, funding their expert prevention program.
Very good. So keep that suggested together. Rose Vegas, UCLA, Department of Family Medicine.
Good afternoon, councilmembers, as well as commission members. Thank you for the chance to speak on this item. I would like to say that the city AIDS Coordinator's Office has been a national leader as far as HIV prevention policy in action. In fact, in 2000, the white paper put out by this office, the white paper put out by this office advanced the message that housing for individuals with HIV should be job one, and it put that on the forefront. In 2009, the National AIDS Housing Coalition actually had this as the same message. It took nine years at the national level. In 2000, the city AIDS Coordinator's Office also called for the use of the best biomedical prevention strategies. This is now part of the National HIV AIDS Strategy, which was released in 2010. So the city AIDS Coordinator's Office has really led the work around advancing HIV prevention. And if you want to look at the best programs, you look at Los Angeles. And so I want to also let you know that the availability of HIV testing in Los Angeles is very important. The 2009 homeless count identified 1,064 individuals who were HIV-positive and homeless. 65% of them were in the city of Los Angeles. And so expanding HIV testing will allow us to serve those who are at greatest need. And so expanding HIV testing will allow us to serve those who are at greatest need. Homeless, HIV-positive, and individuals who are experiencing mental illness and substance abuse. So I thank you for your time, and I do encourage you to support the policies and the actions of the city AIDS Coordinator's Office.
Thank you very, very much. I'm very proud of our AIDS coordination in this, in this office, in this commission, and I'm very proud of Mr. Simon, who always is never afraid to come up and ask me anything, and for the interest of people in this area. Thank you, Stephen. Thank you. And also Sharon White from the Watts Healthcare. Ms. White?
Good afternoon. My name is Sharon White, and I like to have the opportunity, I thank you for this opportunity to speak. I work for Watts Healthcare Corporation, and I also am a representative for the SPA six HIV contention. There are over forty-five providers in SPA six that come out and give HIV services, and we coordinate, even though we lost funding two years ago, we're still meeting, because this issue is very important to the people that live in the, in the community, as well as the service providers. We meet regularly, and we talk about the issues. The issue that the city has lost funding is very important to the community of underserved people who go untested, who go without a lot of education and information and follow-up. So again, it's, it's, this, this is imperative, as was stated by Ms. Venegas. The city has been a leader in the community. Stephen is always accessible to the community. His program supports the community's issues, as, as was stated, in regards to adults, older adults now being infected, younger people being infected. We're talking about co-infections of HIV as, as well as STDs. We're talking about Hep C. So these issues are important, and the funding that is, has been given to the Coordinator's Office has made a big difference in the community. Do you have anything? We thank you for your time and your support.
Introduce your security agent right there.
Terry Reynolds with the Asian American Drug Abuse Program.
Thank you very much, Terry, for being here. Good. Now, that completes the discussion there. Mr. Simon, always keep that on the forefront. I know World AIDS Day is December first, so it's very good. It's also been expanded to our Sister City program, and working with that, I'll keep you posted so we can work together. Mr. Clerk, item number five.
Item number five is a discussion on transportation issues, including the use of citywide vouchers for car services, access services improvements, the accessibility of MTA to city riders, and related matters.
Okay, I'm going to call after Mr. Simon speaks to it, the public comment. Mr. Simon?
Well, simply enough, again, transportation is one of the core issues that keeps coming before this commission and the department. So I, I do know we have folks here from Access Services and the City Department on Transportation who may be able to comment.
Have we had dialogue with the MTA?
I want to defer that to the commission chair.
We've, we've certainly had communication with the MTA, and they have made various presentations to us on safety improvements, equipment improvements, and various items like that. We've also had communications with them through the mayor's office concerning access services, particularly when the mayor was chair of the MTA board.
Very good.
So, they, they know who we're, who we are.
All right, as long as they know who you are and your needs, and try to achieve them, that's the key. Now, I'd like to call Daniel for public comment on number five, followed by Andre Colis and Bernice Kiesman.
Thank you again. I want to say that access services is part of LA County, part of LA City, and part of everybody's life, and people with disabilities, and senior citizens as well. Because it's a unique service, not special service, it's a unique service, that, that, that gives us access to jobs, social life, and everything else, and everything, and everything else that can have in, in a regular life that we can utilize. Access services is great, but it can be improved a lot more. And one of my main, my, my main suggestion is to improve many is access signage for every single entity that public, that public has, every single, every single entity lifestyle that everybody has. Like, for example, like, for example, the Dodger Stadium, there is one, the signage, the signage thing, that, that, that thing there, that, that pickup number one, Dodger Stadium. That's fine, but it should be more about, more of the, more, more of the signage everywhere. Like, more, like, like, um, the, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know if it has, if it has anything else, anything else, the, the, any, any, anything, major lifestyle. That, that's where, that's where, that's where we need to have concentration. We need to look at the concentration of people with disabilities across there. We are doing great, we are doing great, but we need improvement.
Thank you, Daniel. Mr. Simon, could you open that?
Just a, the core item, Daniel, I believe, is pointing out that one, access, certainly have seen improvement, they provide a very unique service to give people access to jobs, social life, and really every other aspect of life. That said, a key recommendation is to improve signage, I believe, at virtually every, certainly public entity, so people are really aware of access pickup points and how to utilize the service. That's an improvement that is recommended.
Also, it can be in schools, schools, um, schools and, 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 and others, and other services that can be done, that, that has, that has a general sense of, of public services.
Right, so include that in schools and other places where people provide public services.
Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you.
Thank you, council member, members of the commission. I want to thank Daniel for those comments, and I agree that our service has improved. And I think with Daniel's help and Teresa's help, we were able to get signage at LAX for the first time. We've been trying to do that for a long time, fifteen years, and I'd be happy to work with Daniel and others on, on Dodger Stadium and other, other public entities in Los Angeles County, to make sure that people can find our vans, and the vans can find our customers. And I just want to say that we've been, I'm a Los Angeles resident, and I want to report that we've been working closely with the City of Los Angeles on a number of things recently. We worked with LAT DOT to get a two million dollar grant for accessible taxi cabs, and also work closely with them on their recent service changes to ensure that people with disabilities knew about access services as a transportation option for them. We've been with council offices, local community groups, like the Life Program at Park La Brea, and attending events at both City Hall and in council districts, including commission meetings, the recent twentieth anniversary celebration of the ADA, and also we were just at Council Member Perry's Senior Celebrating Life event. So we're just, we're committed to Los Angeles, committing to providing excellent service to Los Angeles, and in many respects, because of the contributions of our riders, we, our service has never been better, and we deliver over seventy-five hundred trips a day in one of the most congested regions in the country, and we have over ninety percent on-time performance. We have a coordinated system that can take someone from Pomona to Santa Monica for three dollars each way, and for the first time in the agency's history, we have more accommodations on a daily basis than complaints. But as Daniel says, we can always get better, we can always improve, and I look forward to working with the commission, and I know Giovanna looks forward to working with the commission to, to improve the service as we go forward. So thank you.
My access rider is very busy, so I just want to make this quick. There are some issues that still need to be addressed with regards to issues with safety and close calls that have come most recently, and I will discuss this. I haven't had a chance to bring it up to Giovanna's attention, but on the twenty-third of October, a white access sedan dropped my wife off on the roadside of the street, she almost got hit by an uncoming vehicle because of the driver's disregard for her safety. And this is not just an isolated incident, it's happened other times, it's even happened to me. And so there are issues with the program, there are things, I know I've been very critical, there are, there haven't been improvements, but nevertheless, there are some things that are happening. The on-time percentage for pickup for certain standing rides is still, I mean, there's no excuse to have these kinds of problems be persistent. There's things that could be done, and I don't, we can sit here and argue all day, but since my ride's here and I must go, I will follow up with Giovanna and Councilmember Lavanch, if I can schedule some time to meet with you, I'd like to give you a brief overview of what my real concerns are.
That'd be fine, we could do that, when it's convenient for you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And I'd just like to say we'd be happy to make some, a presentation at some point to the commission on some of the safety improvements we've recently implemented, but I agree with you, we, there's always room for improvement, and Giovanna would be happy to talk to you about those incidents. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Andre. Doctor?
I have a question. How much training do your drivers have for those who are disabled? What kind of training? I don't think we've ever had anybody from your office talk about that.
It's, it's considerable, it's at least, let me say off the top of my, forty to fifty hours of training, in terms of how to actually be an access driver, which includes training on how to, the sensitivity for people with disabilities, and, and how to work with people with disabilities, and so that's part of that general training program that we have for all of our drivers.
Okay.
I'd be happy to get you more information.
All the different disabilities?
Yes.
Forty hours? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Andre.
You're welcome.
Bernice Kaden? Hello, Bernice.
Hello. Thank you. I'm a very happy access rider, and I just wanted to say how wonderful it is to be able to keep my independence and not have to depend on family and friends to get to doctors and go in the office, and the drivers have been just terrific and very helpful to us, and I just wanted to let you all know that. I'm a very happy rider.
Bernice, I can tell from your beautiful smile, you're very happy, but got to make sure everybody's happy. Thanks so much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Mr. Simon, you got anything you want to add on this?
I, I did believe somebody from Department on Transportation was here, might have had comments. I, I.
Phil, Phil, are you going to Rita's retirement tonight, Phil?
What's that?
You going to Rita's retirement tonight?
Yeah.
Good, okay, good. Rita Robinson's retiring with the D O T.
Four o'clock to seven o'clock.
Got it. All right, chief, go.
Okay. My name is Phil Aker from the Department of Transportation, and I actually work in the planning section, but they're working on a compressed natural gas issue this afternoon, the rest of the staff, so I came over to say something about City Ride, and I don't work on the day-to-day operation of City Ride, so we can get answers to your questions if you have specifics about operations. City Ride, as you probably know, has been a user-side subsidy program for people with disabilities, as well as the elderly. And what we, what we've done is we've provided, in the old days, trans, little vouchers that people can use for, we sell them at a discount, you get eighty, you got eighty-four dollars worth of purchasing power each quarter of the year for either fifteen dollars if you're regular income, or six dollars if you're lower income. And then you can use those little vouchers to ride a taxi cab, to call the city's dial-a-ride system, or to buy a discounted bus pass. Metro, as you know, discounts their bus passes quite a bit. Regular bus pass now is seventy-five dollars. Elderly, people with disabilities pay fourteen dollars. We ran into a really major situation with a deficit. We run about a hundred million dollars worth of service. We have Dash, we have Commuter Express, we have a charter bus program, and we have City Ride, and we carry about thirty million people a year, and we've, we're looking at a twenty-three million dollar deficit in this year. And so we really said, okay, let's take, last year, we said, let's take a look at the whole program and see what, where we can trim services, but maintain the core of the Commuter Express, Dash, City Ride, and Charter Bus. And so we hired an outside consultant, we went through everything we run, and we managed to save twenty-four million dollars. And that resulted, that was a result of cuts in Commuter Express, we canceled services, we raised fares, we cut back services on some routes, and also in Dash. We eliminated some Dash services, we eliminated Sunday services, and in City Ride, we reduced the amount of fare value, now what we call fare value. We introduced a, a card instead of the vouchers, which people use to buy services. They're still discounted, but they're not discounted as much. Now, a person of regular income pays twenty-one dollars, a person in low income pays nine dollars. And we only now have two choices, taxi cabs and the dial-a-ride, and we've eliminated the bus pass program. Luckily, Metro came along with their own low-income bus pass program, so now, instead of fourteen dollars, a low-income person pays eight dollars. So, it would, it would just happen to be very, very, it was very fortuitous that Metro took this over.
Well, you think it's better for the disabled community? Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. Who's, Louis, what's your position with DOT now?
I'm the head of the planning section.
The chief?
No. Jim Lefton is the chief.
So head is something else, is, what's that, the division supervisor?
Yeah, division head.
Very good.
Yeah.
Any commissioners have any questions? No questions? Well, one more public comment card, which I don't have with me, but the clerk is running it forward.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Hi. Good afternoon. My name is Alexandria Coleman.
Ms. Coleman, you got to introduce your dog to.
This is my dog, Shaggy, my service dog.
Shadow?
I have recently moved back home to LA. I've been a graduate student in the Management Information Program in Leon Panetta's Public Policy Institute at Cal State Monterey Bay. It has been a shock, having been away for seven years. The most important thing I'd like to contribute to you all is the difficulty of transferring my ride program from Monterey County to Los Angeles County. When I came for surgeries last summer, I was able to be part of a visitor program. It was a little complicated, and I had a limited amount of service, but when I came to live home again, I have to requalify. The difficulty is coming into person, do you have someone evaluate me when I do have a doctor's letter? I think that's more important, what the medical community says. Another important thing is taxi or transportation. I have severe glaucoma, so I don't know if I can drive or not drive. Sometimes there's a crisis. I need to get to Jewelstein rather quickly. They've been very kind to always fit me in, but I have to have a lot of money paying for a taxi because of the limited vouchers, or having to set up a ride the night before, which I can't always do. I used to be very involved in a wonderful museum, I go out and have a wonderful life in the West Side, but now... Commission and working with Don Bradley and everything. I still want to stay involved, but if I don't have transportation, my quality of life really suffers. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
The service dogs being accommodated, that's sometimes difficult.
That's key. Mr. Simon?
Can you, if you would, sir, I may have to go. If Richard could have one last line, because he-
Richard could always, Richard could always have two last lines.
Because Richard has noticed something we bet no one else in the room noticed. It's very important.
While I were here recently, if you heard the alarm system announcing a testing, there was no accessibility for a visual alarm. I didn't see any kind of flashing lights. We really need to look at that policy. Does it include procedural, or do they have appropriate policy to make sure that that is looked at? I've been working-
Richard, the latest on the violence is here. So what we're going to do is draft a motion that on this day, the 3rd of November, the city of Los Angeles General Services Department had an alarm for testing. It was tested as the Commission on Disability and the Arts Parks Health and Aging Committee was meeting. One of the items was emergency preparedness. The very fine and distinguished young Richard came up at the end of the meeting with this comment that makes a lot of sense. Can we move forward because there should be flashing lights and this will take time? But if you didn't get up and start that, Richard, we may not take that up, so sometime in the future will have an impact. Ladies and gentlemen, at this moment, our agenda is complete and if there's no other comments, I'm going to end this group joint meeting, which we should do twice a year, Regina, twice a year. And there's follow-up that we have to do in between. I want to thank everybody for coming down and I'm going to proceed on my day, because I have a couple of meetings outside that the council went on. And I want you to remember Officer Cullen, Joshua Cullen, Los Angeles Police Officer, Central Division, who in his service to his country as a reserve officer, was killed by a roadside bomb in Afghanistan. Today was his funeral at the Cathedral of Our Lady of Angels. And there was, and I'll just tell you, there was nothing more touching than where the mayor spoke, the governor was there, his family spoke, and then as the procession left the altar and center of the cathedral, the organist played the Marine Corps hymn, which really brought it all together. So let's think of our members who served us, let's remember Officer Cullen, and now, this meeting is now adjourned. Good afternoon.
Thank you, councilman.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
And there's one question, I just wanted to mention this thing to, Mr. Clerk, you got the mic on? It didn't go that fast. One other thing I did want to mention for the commission, joining as a chair, a popular television show is Glee. In Glee, those actors, one of the actors is in a chair. I think that's something that we should recognize at some point in the future, because that's the most visible. I think back to L.A. Law, where they had someone in L.A. Law that had a challenge that they showed walking, and that was a proper thing. So if I could ask for unanimous support, we'll create a program to recognize that. And I don't know if the actor is really in the chair or not in the chair, but I think whatever he portrays it in the chair, that's the positive thing. Is that okay with you, Mr. Overton?
Completely.
All right. Good, so we'll look at that in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you.